And ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Marques.
Here.
Maciver.
Here.
Shauer.
Here.
Seifert.
Here.
Six present, one absent. We have a call. The next item on the agenda is the approval of, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature if anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on any item. It doesn't have to be an item on the city council's agenda this evening, but if you just have some questions that you'd like to ask of the city council, please feel free to come forward. Then we'll move on. The next item is the approval of the minutes of May 19th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions? Then the roll, please. Seifert.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Shauer.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Later this afternoon, I received a phone call from Mr. Lou Mallers, Lou's the president of the Pinehurst Homeowners Association. And Lou had asked a question that I thought I did need to answer because of how it's publicized, but he wanted to know if we changed our brush pickup. Because about 10 or 12 residents in the Pinehurst subdivision had brought their brush out to the street this weekend, and when it wasn't picked up, they came, they called Lou. And I said, "Nothing's changed." And I did say, "Unfortunately, Lou, it's in the Darien Neighbors Magazine, it's in the Darien Drug Connect, it's on Channel 6." And I said, and you know, he apologized. I said, "But people really do need to read those things." And so I just say what I'm saying tonight, because if anybody's watching, please read one of those vehicles that we put up communication vehicles that we use, because it's unfortunate, because now these people have to bring this brush back in until the 23rd of June. So it's just, it's just kind of like a warning. You know, read, read the dates. The dates have been published. I think we put that out there on almost every Direct Connect, don't we, Brian?
Yeah, we've had, especially earlier in the year, as we get to an off period, we might leave it off once, because you know, we don't put it in. But earlier, you know, prior to brush pickup, we put it, that in a lot of additions, yes.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate that they have to bring it back in, but they have to bring it back in.
And also, I'm sorry, I had to interject, but residents do have the opportunity to take it over to our Public Works facility. So again, for residents that don't know where our Public Works facility is, that's on Frontage Road, immediately east of Cass, on the south side of I-55. And as a reminder, our next pickup is June 23rd through to 27th, so you must have your brush out by that day.
And Dan, I guess just to clarify that, because I know we've had the issue in the past, sometimes there'll be bags of leaves down there and things, and that's not what we take there. We just take the brush, the larger brush that a resident may not have put out during the pickup.
Correct. Regardless of the signs we have, it seems that some residents take advantage of producing grass clippings and/or leaves, and they tend to leave the bags over there, in which case we have to pay to get rid of that stuff.
Oh, they leave it over at our Public Works facility?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Hmm. Alderman Belkey.
Yes, I received communication from Joanne Coleman, who is located at the 70th block of Claritin Hills, and she had some flooding in her backyard, which is unusual. She said that that's never happened to the degree that it has. So Dan, you know, was in contact with her, and there's going to be an engineering and water modeling study for that creek area, so we can get back to her with if anything has changed and how that's working. Also, another resident called that lives on Bentley, 6600 block of Bentley, and she had some drainage concerns with her yard. And this one specifically was for a detention area, so it was getting really wet, and she said that she never had problems with it building up water before, and they mowed it just fine, so her kids could play in it. And so Dan, you know, responded and said, "That's not really the intention that it's used in that manner," so he didn't recommend, you know, manicuring that.
And just as a reminder, what Alderman Belkey is referring to is the Dari subdivision, which I believe is a seven-lot subdivision, and within the backyards there, there was a certain area that was referred to as a detention facility. That detention facility was designed for each property owner to have that portion of the detention facility. In respect to that, the area was specifically referred to as a semi-moist area, which was not recommended for mowing, but it was not, you know, nobody was objectionable to it. It's very difficult to maintain, and it was always supposed to have this native grasses. So again, that's just a little bit of history for the council members this evening.
Okay. Any other communications to share? I have a number of them. First of all, I'd like to thank the VFW for their Memorial Day ceremony. It was, it was beautiful, it was a very moving affair, and we had a beautiful day, and the turnout was great. We had a lot of residents there to participate in the event, and I'd just like to thank the VFW for ever here, doing such a great job on Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies at Community Park. I got a kick out of one of our young Darien residents asking me for a selfie, so I had a selfie with, I hope I haven't named her name, Alison Everhard, but that was, that was a thrill. So I've also received a letter from Anthony Lukac, asking, inquiring about having the City of Darien go Wi-Fi, citywide Wi-Fi, and I do remember that we did investigate this issue a number of years ago. I don't know if anything's changed since we investigated it, but the cost was prohibitive to make the citywide internet free, Wi-Fi free. But I will pass this on to staff to investigate and see if anything's changed, so this is for the record. One more item, Bona Beef is having a benefit on June 3rd, that's tomorrow, from 3:00 p.m. to closing for the, it's benefiting the American Cancer Society Relay for Life Team Never Give Up. So if you want to participate in that, I just mentioned that at Bona Beef, and 15% to 25% of all sales will go towards this event. So let's move on to the mayor's report. And this is, this is the fun part of my job and our city council meetings, where we get to honor our young people for their accomplishments. And I'd like to read the mayoral proclamation honoring the Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band Day, a band. And whereas the Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band participated in the Heritage World Strides National Music Festival on April 26, 2014, and whereas the Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band performed in four categories, symphonic band, jazz band, color guard, and marching band, and whereas all four ensembles received first division gold ratings out of five possible ratings, and whereas the Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band earned the sweepstakes trophy for the top scorer with more than one performing ensemble, and whereas Shannon Ferguson, Amber Kulpinski, and Nicholas Peroneo earned the Maestro Award, an award which recognizes outstanding individual achievement in an ensemble setting, and whereas only six students earned the Maestro Award at the festival, making it an even greater honor that the three of those awards were given to Eisenhower students. Now I, Kathleen Weaver, Mayor of the City of Darien, do hereby proclaim June 2nd as Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band Day in the City of Darien, and urge all residents to congratulate the talented members of the Eisenhower Junior High Symphonic Band. So I have a proclamation, and first let me, I have a, I have a very long list of all of the members in the bands, but I am going to, I believe these are the individuals that are in the audience today, so I'd like to recognize them, and maybe they can come up so we can take a picture of them. Nicholas Peroneo, he was the recipient of the Maestro Award for Outstanding Individual Performance in an Ensemble Setting, outstanding percussionist in the Symphonic, Marching, and Jazz Bands. Shannon Ferguson, okay, recipient of the Maestro Award for Outstanding Individual Performance in an Ensemble Setting, and a leader in the Symphonic, Marching, and Jazz Bands. Amber Kulpinski, recipient of the Maestro Award for Outstanding Individual Performance in an Ensemble Setting and Drum Major. Donna Stevens, Rifle Captain. Is she here this evening? I'm going to probably merely butcher a name. Adrian Petricu. Did I get it close?
Yeah.
Okay, he's, he's a rifle captain. Ed Razutko, I've heard that name before, Drum Line Captain. Sharon Conith, a Drum Major. And Alicia Avvert, a Drum Major. And Brett Hafner, one of the leaders of the Symphonic, Jazz, and Marching Bands. Tessa Lawler, one of the leaders of the Symphonic, Jazz, and Marching Bands. Okay, and Robert Kelly, one of the leaders of the Symphonic, Jazz, and Marching Bands. And I guess, well, I'd like to congratulate all of you, and would one of you like to take this proclamation that the city council has proclaimed in your honor? Do you have some cameramen, camera people come on up? So turn around, so you can, let me take that, and stand in the front of the group, and let our camera people take pictures. The band director, Matthew Janis, why don't you come and join them too, so that we have the whole group there?
Congratulations.
Okay. Can we get a couple? Okay, I think everyone up here wants to shake all of your hands, so do you want to turn around and say some?
Congratulations.
Don't worry, buddy, good job.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Hey, thanks for volunteering.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Congratulations.
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 Nice firm handshake, sir, I like that.
Yes, very firm.
I invited Matthew Janis to say a few words, and I see a principal, Mr. Fitzjard's in the audience, I don't know if he wanted to say a few words.
Mr. Janis.
Okay, okay.
And I will keep this brief, and first of all, thank you, Mayor and Alderman, for inviting us here. It really is a great honor, and being my first year at Eisenhower Junior High, I'm constantly amazed, not just by the parental support, but also by the community's support, and it's just one more affirmation of that. And we definitely wouldn't be here without the incredible work of all the students, so you know, my thanks and gratitude go out to the students, and you know, we're fortunate, I'm fortunate enough to have a couple of these wonderful students you see out here coming back, but unfortunately, most of them are going on to bigger and better things, and I wish them the best of luck in the future.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you very much. Also, under my report, I would like to have a motion to approve the reappointment of Wayne Scharnick to our Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. His, the memo on him was in the packet, so Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman, well, Belzak, now why would you guys put their hands up? A fellow Lions Club member. Do I have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shauer.
Aye.
Seifert.
Aye.
Six ayes. The reappointment's been approved. Wayne, would you come up and be sworn in, please?
Or does he have to be sworn in again?
Yes. Oh, it has, okay, he has, has to.
Okay, selfie.
My new term, our terminology now, right? Selfies?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Jesus, Dan.
Aye, and state your name.
Certainly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of fire and police commissioners.
Of fire and police commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And here's your reappointment.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, congratulations.
Okay, guys, thank you. Also, under the mayor's report, I'd like to invite Jim Prime, the owner of Chuck's Barbecue, the newest member of our business community, to come forward. I think we, I don't know if we have questions for you, or you have some announcements for us, or just how are things going?
Things are going good, and like we were saying, the banquet is what took a while to catch up, and we've got like, maybe 20 weddings already planned for the rest of this year.
Wow, that's good.
Yeah, five or six in September.
Jim, can you come up a little closer to, just make sure that home hears you?
Yeah. Usually I got a big mouth, I usually don't need it. But things are going good, and I hope everybody's happy with the way the property looks, and luckily, got rid of that eyesore, and doing, doing better with it now. Have you guys been back to see our garden?
Yes.
Oh, yes, I saw it last year, and it's, I'm sure it's affordable now.
I may be, I may be asking you guys in a letter or something, I was just contemplating whether it'd be a problem or not to possibly hold like a garden dinner, where we serve wine or something, and put a tent back there by the garden, and put that in writing to you?
Put it in writing, sounds great.
Yeah.
Sounds like a nice, nice little promotion.
But I think everything's been going good, and I hope you guys are happy with it.
I thought you were going to ask us if you grow marijuana back there or something.
No, no.
It's compulsory, not sold.
I'm one of the few people I know that's never tried it. Pretty square.
Does anybody have questions for Jim?
Jim, how's sales this year versus last year? Obviously, you opened up in April or May last year.
No, we opened in June last year.
Oh, was it June?
Yeah. So we're, I think we're about six days or seven days from our anniversary.
Okay. Everything looking good?
Yeah, yeah. Things, you know, as you watch our schedule, we're always coming up with events. We had the Sox outing recently, and we had W, not W, was it the score out there for the football game, and people, we still, every day, and that's the reason I'm here today, is for about the electronic sign, we, every day, we have people say, "I came up and down this road how many times, and I live in the area, and I never knew you guys are open for breakfast, or I never knew you guys were, what kind of restaurant that was." And we've had a hard time getting that message across. We've tried different forms of advertisement, you know, direct mail, radio, we're going on Midwest Outdoors, we've got commercials going on there, different stuff like that, but that's, that's the hard part.
You know, Jim, a resident mentioned to me that the sign was almost too busy, and I wonder if that's the reason why they're not catching the important points.
I don't know, you can only put so much on a sign, and we do so much.
Well, that's why I'm saying there's so much on it.
Well, it's possible. We didn't design it, we let, you know, professional sign people do it, and we hope they know what they're doing, but we'd like to get the message out about breakfast, and when we closed down the restaurant, it looks like the whole place is closed, and yet we've got the one half of the building that's open for late-night menu, and you know, and drinks, or watching sports or stuff, and that's also hard to portray to people.
Well, hopefully, this electronic sign will help.
Madam Mayor, one of the things we mentioned last week when we discussed this in committee, I asked Jim this question, I don't know if anybody had thought about this, but the electronic sign might even keep him from having to put banners up on that fencing outside.
I've actually discussed that with my brother and sister, and we all said the same thing, we should eliminate them altogether.
Yeah, which is a good thing.
Because it's redundant, and an electric sign would be a lot better.
Right.
If any of you guys are interested, by the way, our canopy got run into a third time since we've been open.
No.
Are you kidding?
Yeah. Well, last week, the.
Some truckers just, they haven't got the brake power to figure out, they're too tall for the.
There's a caution sign down there now.
Yeah, I saw that.
That says eight foot.
Yeah.
It's really nine foot.
Is this?
I don't want anybody, air on the side of caution.
Is this the vendors that are bringing products to your restaurant?
The last, the last two were busloads, like the last one was from the Aloft Hotel in Bowling Brook, dropping people off. He went under there and hit it, and before that, it was a bus for another hotel, actually, yeah.
Wow.
And before that was a vendor.
Well, I've, I've driven through your parking lot, well, I've been to the place as well, but I also drive by when there's events going on at the Sportsplex to see, because there's international hockey leagues that go on there, and I drive around that parking lot to see where the vehicles are from, and then I go to yours, to see how many of them are going to yours, and I see a lot of license plates out of state, out of country. When you go into Sportsplex, it has your sign.
Right.
You know, right there when you walk in, but what happens at those is there's campers, RV campers, so they need to be careful what you're awning to.
Yeah. Signs about that big, but it still happened again last week.
Yeah.
Not bad, though, we'll get it fixed.
You guys were probably real disciplined when the Hawks lost last night, because your parking lot was full to capacity for that game.
Yeah, anybody, anybody who's got TVs and, you know, a place to get a cocktail and a nice meal, you know, you wanted a championship event to go on forever.
Right. Me, I don't think there was a parking space in the lot last night.
Yeah, it was pretty packed, yeah.
Yeah.
Jim, how's your video gaming business been?
Been good, yeah. I think you guys probably, you obviously give reports or something on it, I know it's on, it's public information.
How often do we get, are we getting reports yet?
Yeah, Mike, we're getting some revenues, and I don't know.
On the revenues, I don't know of any direct reports.
Reports that we can access. I didn't know if it was meeting your expectations, or?
Yeah, I would say it is, you know, you can't compare the figures that you're going to be getting from people who jumping into it now, at least like in our Burbank location especially, because communities all around us had it. Okay, so you, people are going, "Oh, we're going to make so much money," because they were doing it over there, but all the people that were near your community were crossing the line, so, but we're still very happy with it. I think you guys will be happy when you see the numbers, hopefully it'll fund some nice projects for you. But yeah, I think it's been going well.
Any other questions for Mike, for Jim? Thanks for coming forward. I know you're here for the, the sign board, but thanks for taking some comments.
No problem at all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's move to the city clerk's report.
No report this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City administrator's report.
No report also, Mayor.
Department heads, I believe we're going to be hearing from the police chief.
Dan, do you have some? No, go ahead.
Did you give him the, the comments from the resident regarding the report?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll see how this works. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Have two. Well, I was down here at 6:30 to make sure this was okay, and I think it went to sleep mode. Would you bear with me just one second, please?
Sure. It's coming on. It's a pro or a sin? That shows up awake, or do you hear everybody?
Okay, I have two short videos to show you, well, one is shorter than the other one, this one is shorter. The backdrop on this one is a private surveillance camera. The gentleman who owns this camera, and I will not give the address for safety's sake, the gentleman who owns this camera was away from his home, and he was in the process of showing his friend how his new camera system worked. His house had in fact been burglazed. One of the things that the residents and council members should keep in mind, that it's estimated between 30% to 60% of burglars return to the place where they initially burglarized, and it's generally because they found easy access, and they know exactly what they left. So I wanted to show this very briefly and talk about what happened as a result of this.
With the lights on in the distance, is that part back of the home?
Yes.
Okay.
As you'll notice in the left portion of the screen, as you face it, there will be a figure that appears, you just saw the shadow there, that is in fact the burglar. You notice that he's walking from place to place, trying to find an access point to gain entry into the residence. He ultimately does not gain, gain access. What happens is when the resident sees, when he's showing his friend that the, his system, and realizes that there's someone there, he immediately calls police.
Was it, when he was showing his to a friend, was that they don't actually got?
Yes, this was, this was real time, he opened up his application, and the individual was there, he sees it, and immediately calls the Darien Police Department.
Did they catch that?
Yes, that's the good part about it. The officers responded to the burglary in progress. One of our officers observes an offender, or who she believes to be an offender, on a bicycle, and that's what catches her eye. It's about 3:00 in the morning, if I'm not mistaken. And in any event, this turns out not to be the burglar, she, another individual in the shadows catches her eye at the same time, and the officer engages this person. Ultimately, as it would turn out, the investigation, and I'll let Sergeant Churey talk about that, but the investigation would reveal that this individual was responsible for four burglaries here in Darien. Both of, all four of those were initial and returned burglaries, so. Sergeant.
Okay.
Good evening. The detectives were contacted after this juvenile was taken into custody. He is a 16-year-old resident of our town, and lives somewhat in the vicinity. Based on the investigation and the interviews, there was a search of a residence that took place, and some evidence was recovered, which implicated this juvenile in four burglaries. The, the pattern started actually back on May 10th, during the overnight hours was one residence. On May 11th was the second one at a different residence, both on the same block. On the 12th was the third burglary reported, and that was back at the second house, and then on the 17th was our final one, where this juvenile was taken into custody. Based on the extent of the crime pattern that took place, and the interviews that the detectives and the officers had with this juvenile, we contacted the state's attorney's office for felony screening, and the juvenile was ultimately charged with three residential burglaries, an attempted residential burglary, three charges for possession of stolen property, and some other charges. He was then taken to the Kane County Juvenile Detention, where he currently remains. So this, this was a good case. It goes to also emphasize the video recordings that we use to help us in our investigations. We've relied on those on a number of cases now, some of them to corroborate the investigation or the information that we have, others to help us charge in cases. So again, as a reminder, we are asking residents, if you have a surveillance system at your house, we would like to have you contact our crime analyst, Stacy Sherman. Her phone number is 630-353-8145. This information will just be put in a database in case we have a crime that occurs either at your residence or in the neighborhood, where we may ask you to check your video surveillance for us. Is any questions, please?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Our camera, it seems as though the camera is set far back, the camera that was owned upon itself?
This is probably. I'm sorry, this is probably not his only camera, and it has one view of the property, and so in this particular case, the location of the camera was very beneficial.
Okay.
Had it been placed in another location, it might not have seen exactly what was going on.
All righty. Alderman Belkey, thank you for the question.
Yes, I was just wondering about the juvenile was taken to Kane County, that's for the juvenile, the housing of the juvenile.
Yes, DuPage County used to have the juvenile detention facility, that closed down, and they made arrangements for Kane County to house juveniles from DuPage County. The court would still be back here in DuPage, that's just where they're currently housed at.
The good thing is, is he's in custody now, and he won't be out for a while. We're also looking to work with his, his mother, his mother does not want him back home, so we're looking to see if there are any ancillary services that we can provide, because ultimately, at some point, he's going to get out, and if we haven't mitigated his behavior, then we have, we still have a burglary problem. So we're looking at a couple of non-governmental agencies, organizations, that do provide follow-up services and referral services.
Actually, here's that bit, we'll take a try.
Well, not necessarily, but because of his offenses rise to the level, there's a pledge system in Illinois. point system in Illinois and four burglaries certainly, um, raise, raise him to the point level, uh, for, uh, being retained in custody.
Okay, curious.
Any other questions on that topic?
I guess, uh, Jim, do you?
I just, I just heard him ask for the residents to call Dan Kemp. Do you need to say anything from the businesses or?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, absolutely. We, we are truly encouraging both commercial and, uh, uh, private residences, residents who have a, a surveillance system, a video surveillance system, to please contact us and, and register your camera. As Sergeant Churey said, we won't be bothering you unless there's an incident that occurs at your property or near your property, and we feel that there's a good possibility that, uh, surveillance footage was, was available from it.
Okay, great. Great, great catch here. Chief, you wanted to talk further about your report?
Yes, ma'am. I, I feel bad being the only one with a report tonight, so.
That's right, you were gonna show us another video, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. This one is a little longer and it has to do with human trafficking. Um, last month, in April, Senator Roscom hosted a human trafficking, uh, forum, uh, conference, if you will, seminar, if you will, and I, I attended that conference. A president at that conference was Jack Blakely, who's the State's Attorney, uh, and a former federal prosecutor, and he and I worked on the Child Safety Act that, uh, limited, uh, children being charged for, as prostitutes. And so ultimately, what this does is create victim-based, uh, prosecutions without the victims' cooperation. Uh, and human trafficking cases have long relied on the victims' cooperation, and so you basically victimize the victim of, of second or third time. And so one of the reasons I'm showing this is because we're gonna move towards a, uh, one of the, let me digress for a minute. One of the common terms that has come up under the management and accountability model that we're working towards is our OIO return on investment. And, uh, we've been engaged in some activities where the return on investment is, is somewhat limited, specifically our overweight truck enforcement. It's a very labor-intensive, we pay for the truck, uh, the, the scales, we pay for the maintenance of the scales, the recertifications of the scales, and it's a labor-intensive, uh, endeavor. And the roads are our county road, so it's not being a great benefit to Da, the citizens of Darien. And so what we're looking at doing is engaging in enforcement strategies that do have a larger social impact in terms of return, as well as an economic impact. The advantage to, uh, human trafficking enforcement is that if we arrest customers, we are entitled to write them a ticket, a citation for, that's a one thousand dollar ticket, and the city of Darien is entitled to keep half of that, so. Uh, that's the reason I wanted us to take a look at this, so you guys would understand how important it is and impactful it is.
To whom it may concern. At first I thought I was very lucky to have an opportunity to come to the USA, to see this place, work with people of different races, and have a good life, just like other people. I was lucky, not all were given the chance to come here. My excitement vanished once I started working. I was working like a slave, I was mentally tortured, I had no freedom to anything, I was tied to debt and sick. I was so hopeless when I met people from the Salvation Army. They worked nicely with me, just like a family. They helped me feel safe and comfortable and helped me to grow stronger. They assist me in many ways, giving me food to eat and clothing to wear, and even offered me temporary shelter to stay. They are the ones who helped me find legal counsel to work on my case until I got my visa approved. The Stop It program plays a very important role in the life of a victim. I am truly grateful and thankful to the staff. God bless you all.
Human trafficking is any time a person is treated like a commodity, something to be bought or sold, by being forced, tricked, or threatened into sexual or labor services. Traffickers can be anyone. Often the traffickers of those we work with are pimps, husbands, boyfriends, neighbors, and at times, parents. Traffickers are both men and women, and sometimes even children. The mission of Stop It is to assist people in escaping their exploitative situations.
My, um, case, uh, Stop It worker, she has, um, um, taught me that, um, when you're, well, when I first met you, if I first met her, she was like, um, she's serious about everything she does, and if I'm trying to better myself than me or her, we can all just perfectly.
Stop It workers meet with clients to help them live independently, free from their traffickers and free from Stop It. This is done by providing support to the entire person and at times, the entire family unit. Stop It workers meet clients where they are, physically, mentally, emotionally, and spiritually.
The Salvation Army's Stop It program provides that alternative to some of the choices or some of the other daunting obstacles that are facing them when they look around and consider that there's very little that else that they can do with their lives. But we are able to restore dignity, we're able to provide a sense of support, and some very practical social service operations where, once they connect with the Salvation Army, we're able to establish that greater network of support and service so that not only can their lives turn around, but ultimately, our goal is that they will no longer ever need the Salvation Army. They'll certainly perhaps even be a solution to someone else's need or crisis.
The people there are very encouraging and they help you a lot with your mood, like if you feel down or down about yourself, they'll tell you good things to build you up.
We work with anyone who meets the federal definition of human trafficking. This can be minors or adults, it can be US citizens and lawful permanent residents, or foreign nationals with or without legal status. It can be females or males.
Yo no tenía ni a quien a correr, ni a quien pedir apoyo. Y ahora pues estoy agradecida que tengo a alguien a quien ocurrir y a quien pedirle apoyo. Y antes yo no tenía nada de eso. Si no tenía que comer pues yo me aguantaba, o si no tenía para albar pues iba caminando. Y ahora pues estoy muy agradecida con el programa que me están apoyando. Y que tengo mi trabajadora que pues siempre está pendiente de mí.
We work in the Chicagoland area, and specifically, the Metropolitan Division of the Salvation Army, which includes eleven different counties from Winnebago to Lake to Will, but the majority of those we serve are in Cook County, Illinois.
The Stop It program is an integral part of our, uh, human trafficking initiative at the Cook County State's Attorney's Office. We've developed a, a new approach to handling human trafficking, um, here domestically, and the Stop It program has been with us, um, from the very beginning. The, what's important is that we, as local prosecutors, change, uh, and develop in the way we handle these cases. And what is significant about our program is that we have great relationships with social service providers that never existed before, and Stop It, of course, is one of those. And they are with us, uh, each and every day on the front lines, helping us not only with our investigations, but certainly, they're there to offer critical services that these victims need, um, and they will continue to offer those services and work with us, and we look forward to continuing to work with them to hopefully, um, do something to eradicate this crisis.
Stop It collaborates with many different entities for a variety of reasons. We have law enforcement and prosecutors that we work closely with to aid in any way we can to help bring the bad guys to justice. We have service providers that we collaborate with to ensure that all the needs of our clients are met. This includes housing options, medical services, dental offices, tattoo cover-up programs, mental health services, and many more. Anyone can call the Stop It hotline, even anonymously. Many times, the hotline calls made to Stop It are from law enforcement and hospital personnel, but we also receive referrals from family members and neighbors who suspect something suspicious happening. If Stop It cannot safely connect with the suspected trafficked persons, Stop It passes along the information to the Cook County Human Trafficking Law Enforcement Working Group for them to determine who should investigate.
One of the big issues is that prostitution is a twenty-four-seven business, uh, and, and when you are engaged in enforcement, oftentimes, it's not at banker's hours, nine to five, and so having the ability to pick up the telephone and, and let a service provider know, look, I have a lady who stopped, there could be some human trafficking involved here, and we need to do something about it. The ability to be able to do that on a twenty-four-hour basis is phenomenal, in, in our ability, law enforcement's ability to interrupt the process, the cycle, and to provide some immediate services for the victim.
How can you help Stop It? Donate concrete goods and gift cards for Stop It clients to use. Host a community event. Talk with others about human trafficking. Volunteer by using the skills that you have to support our program. If you have interest in further partnering with Stop It, please check out our website at www.s-a-stop-it.org. The volunteer opportunities will to be added to our email list, or you can email us directly at stop-it@usc.salvationarmy.org.
Two points to make here. One of the most common misconceptions is that human trafficking is a big city issue and, and it's not, uh, something that we should concern ourselves with. And very much like the heroin highway, this is, this is an important issue. Now, in the video, they mentioned that they focus a lot on Cook County, but Jack Blakely, State's Attorney for Cook County, is also a federal prosecutor who's tasked with the regional enforcement of human trafficking. And so if you, if you look at, uh, for those of you who have the internet, uh, if you look at the, the ads on Backpage or Craigslist, what, and, and look at the adult section, what you'll see is, is tons and tons of ads, uh, that are right here in our community from Darien, Lombard, Oakbrook, uh, and such. And many of these girls claim to be eighteen, nineteen, and they're actually underage and they're being trafficked. So this is an important issue, uh, that we'd like to dig into because it does have social impact and it does have, uh, some ramifications that we'd like to, to have an effect on. And that concludes that portion of, of my report. Uh, now, now for the informational portion, uh, our crime analyst has currently, has currently worked up, uh, an analysis of the thefts at Hensfield High School, and we are working with Hensfield High School, uh, to mitigate those, uh, for the remainder of this year, and, uh, we've developed a strategy for next year as well. She's also completed, uh, an analysis of retail thefts. There's a, a sharp increase in retail thefts in the community this year. Part of that is because of the expansion of Walmart, and they brought in some, uh, really well-trained security personnel, so they're catching more people. But we have a, a seminar, a retail theft seminar that Claire Barnes-Urbani is working with us to put together, and our detectives will present a, a prevention seminar, and we basically want to find out what we can do to, to, to stem this. Similarly, we got some information over the weekend about, uh, thefts at our public storage facility here on Frontage Road, and we're actually, at this point, looking to go after them because they've been very uncooperative in, in, in terms of installing cameras and, and what have you, so we want to look at what leverage we have, both locally and at the corporate level, to do something about that. Uh, our task force officer has been part of seizures that have resulted in us having a, receiving awards of about a hundred thousand dollars up to this point, slightly over a hundred thousand dollars, and we hope that he keeps on rolling. Uh, in terms of technology, our firearms simulator is fully operational now and, uh, classes, uh, training sessions are going through it regularly, and if anyone is interested in, in, uh, participating or going through the training session, uh, it'll take about fifteen or twenty minutes, just let me know and we can get you through a training session. It's real interesting. Alderman Mackay, Alderman Kenny, and Alderman Bezzac all witnessed it, and so I think you find some merit in, in understanding how, how your dollars are spent and how important it is to, uh, to have the, the unit. Uh, the detective division is currently investigating fifty-one criminal investigations, and the detective also court, the division also coordinates the, uh, Hang-On Initiative, our community engagement initiative where we give informational, uh, car hangars regarding burglary to the motor vehicle and residential burglary. In terms of personnel, we are set to give a promotional exam to fill the vacancy left by Sergeant Stock on the first of August. On the twenty-third of August, we will be giving a new police test, police officer's test, and we are, we have currently three officers, brand-new officers, Carol Camacho, who's completed her field training and she's working solo now, Jennifer Dolins, who's completed her academy training but is in field training status, and Joe Pastick, who is currently in Celia. We are also in the process of completing a candidate, uh, a fourth candidate that we expect to start in, I think it's July, so we're moving forward on that. Uh, the, the final point in the, well, next to the final point, uh, we, we get a lot of noise complaints, uh, from loud parties to, to other loud noises. There is a, a, a city ordinance that governs it and is cited here in the, in the report, and residents need to be clear that we're, we're gonna enforce the city ordinance with citations, uh, in, in the event that we're called and we can determine that there is a violation of the municipal code related to, um, noise ordinance. I'm gonna give a few tips and clues before we close on burglary to the motor vehicle. Lock your cars. And I know I keep saying this week in and week out, but we keep getting the same incidents. And burglary, yeah, whether it's the motor vehicle or your residence, is a crime that we can have an impact on as a community by simply denying the opportunity. And so we, we want to make sure you lock your cars, don't leave your valuables in plain view, check your surroundings, uh, secure your valuables prior to getting to your destination. One of the things that we do as, 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 as a community is we wait till we get to the, the shopping center and then we pull the GPS unit out of the car, we throw the, uh, person to the backseat or under the, uh, the visor for a hatchback. Not a good deal because somebody may have seen you put it there and, uh, waiting to break in your car once you're gone. Uh, in terms of residential burglary prevention, you want to lock your doors and windows, especially at night when you're away from home. If you have sliding glass doors, make sure you put a brace so that it can't be slid. Oftentimes, a, a credit card or a knife can be slid between, to, to jimmy the latch, and so you want to have that in place that, that, that prevents the glass from being slid. Uh, get an alarm system, get a camera system. Uh, don't leave your garage door open, don't leave your garage remote inside of an unlocked car parked in your driveway. Uh, be aware that the, the rules burglaries, we've had two recent rules burglaries where, uh, individuals have come to the residence posing as contractors that the residence, resident did not call. They were admitted to the house, one was admitted to the household under this rules, and once they got to the back of the household, the front door was left unlocked, somebody else entered and ransacked the home. So we are working diligently to, to see if we can stem that. We put in some new mechanisms in terms of patrol and, uh, contact cards and things like that, so we're gonna be looking to identify people that we, that don't have a legitimate basis for being in the community. Uh, robbery, maintain situational awareness, know your surroundings. If they're hair stand up on the back of your neck, don't ignore it. Uh, don't allow yourself to be taken from one place to another. If somebody contacts you in the parking lot of a store and says, get in your car, don't do it. Don't do it. Uh, it's a rare commodity when someone escapes from that situation, so just simply don't, but don't be taken from one place to another. Uh, your memory is your best tool. Child safety, light of some of the things that have gone on, not, not necessarily locally, but across the nation here, uh, don't, don't let your children go to the bathrooms by themselves. Take them to the bathroom. Uh, don't teach them to speak to strangers. I know this sounds horrible, but don't teach them to speak to strangers because ultimately, what you do is break down some of the, the barriers that you've instilled about stranger danger, so if mommy says he's, he's, he or she's okay, then it's okay for me to speak to him by myself, so, uh, keep your kids close and don't allow that to happen. And then finally, one look, review the statistics of the report. Uh, burglary, we're showing a decline both, uh, let me digress for a second here. We look at our, all of our data in, in two ways. We look at it, um, police period to police period comparison. A police period is a twenty-eight day cycle, and so we look at it, uh, from fourth period to fourth period, and then we also look at the first four periods of the year or whatever frame, timeframe we're looking at. So we look at it from a, a period to period and a year-to-date. And so with burglary, we show a, a decrease in both the year-to-date and the, uh, period-to-period. Criminal damage shows a, um, sixty-six percent decrease period-to-period and a seventy-six percent, uh, decrease year-to-date. Domestic violence incidents show a one hundred percent, uh, period, um, year-to, period-to-period and eleven percent, uh, decline for year-to-date. Drug offenses again show a forty percent decrease period-to-period and a twenty-six percent decrease year-to-date. Robbery shows a statistical increase of one, uh, year-to, by one incident for year-to-date, but it shows a statistical increase of four hundred percent. Uh, there was an, this was an attempt robbery, nothing was taken, no offender was caught. The victim in this incident did not get a look at the offender. Uh, he approached her in the rear of one of the shopping, uh, areas here and, um, minused, minused her for a phone. She yelled, told him to get away, and he ran away, so. Uh, I'm not convinced that he, he was a real robber, but it was definitely unattempted in any event. As I discussed, there's a, a hundred and twenty-eight percent period-to-period increase in retail theft and a forty-six percent increase year-to-date. Uh, those numbers bear some concern, and so we'll be working towards, uh, reducing those. Uh, two-point-four percent increase in nine-one-one calls, thirty-six percent increase, uh, in adult arrests, that's period-to-period. Year-to-date, we show a four percent increase. Uh, no change in juvenile arrests, seventeen percent decline in suspicious activity, a hundred and forty-six percent increase in business checks, forty-nine school visitations and thirty-nine, uh, incidents of community engagement. We anticipate seeing community engagement ra, rise, uh, consistently for the next five years, uh, because ultimately, what we're working towards is a community-oriented policing department where every member of the department engages community, and engagement follows information, info, information leads to empowerment, and empowerment leads to us- Information leads to empowerment, and empowerment leads to us working collectively to solve problems. And so, this is the direction we're going in. We think it's an effective direction, and we think it'll lead to victory for us. Call activity, the trend that we've noticed over the two and a half years since we've been collecting data in terms of when our 911 calls are occurring remains fairly consistent. 43% of our 911 calls occurred on days during the fourth period. 43% occurred on afternoons, 12% on midnights, and 2.5% occurred between the period between 3:00 and 7:00 a.m. In terms of officer activity, this is basically a management tool that defines our productivity model to make, and when you look at the numbers in the officer's statistical models, what you see is there's certain officers who are consistently high performers, certain officers who are marginal performers. And what our goal as managers is, is to get everybody to performing up to a moderate and average level. And so, that's where we're headed. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
You said that Officer Camacho was already on the street, and I tell by the statistics, she was very active on the street already.
Yes, yes. And the goal is to keep her, newer officers are generally more active than seasoned officers, because they're trying to get their feet wet and trying to get an understanding. And so, the goal is to keep her at that high level of performance.
I also had the opportunity, I was watching my granddaughter Saturday evening, and I'm sure you heard it too, firecrackers were being blown off Saturday evening in the area where I was staying. That falls into the category of the noise ordinance. Is that correct?
It does, but there's also other prohibitions. Fireworks are illegal on their face. We've started, passed on a message for us to begin our fireworks initiative. We'll begin looking at the data, and we'll be passing out flyers and distributing information to discourage folks, our residents, from using any type of fireworks, other than those that are supplied by municipality during a fireworks show by trained pyrotechnic professionals.
Any other questions for the chief? Alderman Belkey?
I have a couple of questions. The officer statistics, now, do these officers frequent all the beats, or are they pretty much assigned to a certain area when they're on duty?
That's an excellent question. Generally, the officers are assigned to a beat. However, one of the things that we look at is which beat is encouraging or is incurring the most activity, 911 activity or criminal activity. And then, we may actually saturate that beat, not to the exclusion of the other beats, but the idea is to stop crime before it happens. And so, oftentimes, beats one and three are our most active. Beat two is, and we'll be producing another map as we move forward, and we have our new crime mapping strategy. But one of the things we encourage is the officers to remain focused on the beat unless there's a hot call, and we want them to go to prevent where the crime is. And so, our sergeants create directed missions based on call data, on crime analysis, and things like that.
Because I was wondering if they were tied to, more or less tied to a specific beat, and if you're looking at all these statistics equally, if they're in an area that has more activity, then you would think their percentages would be higher than the others. So, is there an adjustment for that, or?
No, no, because what we expect is that, the only adjustment that we make is for the midnight shift. There's clearly less activity on the midnight shift. And the theory is, is during a six-month period, we expect to do our first performance evaluations in December of this month. We anticipate that during the six-month period, then every officer on the department will have worked at least two shifts on days, two shifts on afternoons, and two shifts on midnight. So, it balances itself out. So, when we look at officer productivity, we should have a fairly good balance.
Okay, thank you. And then, the task force officer, the $100,000 in forfeited funds, my question is, does this relate to the same rules that we talked about at the budget meeting for the K-9? How we're able to use those funds?
In terms of, I'm not sure if I understand what you say, to the K-9.
Right, because, well, in our budget meetings, it was pretty lengthy conversation, you know, when we could use these funds, and how to use them, and how to document them properly. But in my mind, I was thinking more about the K-9 drug, you know, money. So, is this in the same bucket?
It depends on how the K-9 is used. If the K-9 is used by Darian, then we get the lion's share, because the original investigation originated with us, and our officer, our K-9 actually did the sniff and found the money. If we're asked to participate or assist another agency and our K-9 does a sniff, then it's somewhere between, usually between 2% and 7% that the K-9 is eligible for, if it's generated outside of our jurisdiction. And here, again, it depends.
Right, so, my question more relates to the budget, if this is all kind of combined into one item?
No, this is just monies that our task force officer was instrumental in recovering. This does not include K-9 recoveries.
Okay, so, again, though the income, whether it's in a different fund or not, do we still have to use those same rules?
Yes, essentially, yes.
This is the exact income that we talked about, that had a number of rules that the chief mentioned, how you can budget, how you can use it. But until we use it, it sits in its own segregated funds, apart from all of our other funds, if that's what you're asking.
Yes, it is.
And then, when it's time to use it, you know, we apply those rules. And in some cases, there's some smaller things the chief is able to do with that. And anything larger, like there were some items that were not in the budget, anything larger, that would come back to the city council.
Now, equitable sharing dollars, those funds that are awarded, none of that's in the budget. When we spend them, we still have to follow the procurement procedures that the city's established already. The difference is, is that those are dollars that are unaccounted for in the budget.
Right.
I think your question, though, isn't it that the K-9, we have different funds for the funds we're receiving from the task force officer, that's the specific seminar that you went to?
Yes.
And those are specifically delineated as far as what we can use that for?
The equitable sharing guide delineates how we can spend the task force, or any, not just task force dollars, but any time that we have to submit, the form called DAG 71. And that's why I said, if we have a state seizure that our dog participates in, where we originate the investigation, that's not ever mixed with that. But if we participate with an outside agency where we have to submit the DAG 71, that's awarded by the Department of Justice and would go into that same fund.
Alderman Kenny?
Chief, any arrest report? The top line shows number of arrests.
Yes, sir.
For example, April 2014, it shows 67.
Yes, sir.
But when you go to the bottom of the row, it says 37.
That's because we haven't calculated every arrest. We've only looked at a certain number of, certain type of arrest categories on this report. So, what we're looking at is 67 total arrests, but we haven't looked at every single category. So, if you add them together, it doesn't nearly match. I think it's 37 at the bottom. I'm not looking at it.
Correct.
Yeah, so, we haven't looked at every arrest category. So, we just identify the number of total arrests.
So, these are just some of the major categories?
Yeah, those are some of the major categories. And I think the most significant portion is, is that 33% of 21 of the 67 arrests have to do with retail theft. And so, clearly underscores a problem.
What do you think the percentage of those 21 are out of Walmart?
Probably 95 or 100%.
Okay.
And as I said, we have a retail theft seminar that we called, and that Claire's helped with it through the chambers, something that's put together. The detectives will be sitting on it. And then, I'll be going around, actually giving a personal invite to all of the managers or owners at the establishments involved.
And I know you can't really get into too much detail, but if you talk to any of the other departments regarding the ruses and the robberies, like?
We are collaborating with other departments. Sergeant Churey and the crime analyst both have contacts in the other departments, looking at ruse, the ruse burglies. We've also developed a disk through our contacts with other departments that lists photos and modes of operation and what have you, of probably about 100 different ruse burglars and gypsy burglars.
I've noticed a correlation between me seeing a construction vest on my phone at 911.
And we encourage, that level of suspicion is to be encouraged. It's not a sidetrack for us or anything else. If you see it, please call, because the way we're going to catch these guys is through aggressive patrol by the police officers, and they do a good job at that. But the other component of that is the citizenry getting involved and saying, "Hey, look, this guy doesn't look like he belongs here." One of the other things that we've started to do this year, and I was going to leave it to the two-year report, but we've started to reject, anytime we have a solicitor application and Sergeant Churey's unit does the investigation, if we can't link a phone number, or the phone number that they provide to legitimate businesses, sometimes they come up to a bank, sometimes they come up to AT&amp;T or whatever, we're rejecting all of those. And it's our sense that if we're giving a solicitor permit that we are tactically conveying to the residents, that this person has been vetted, and it's safe to let them onto your property. And so, rather than provide that solicitor's permit to somebody that we can't adequately vet, we're rejecting all of those.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the chief? Great report, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, did you have a report?
No, Madam Mayor, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's move on to the treasurer's report. We have two warrants this evening. Treasurer report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, first warrant, it's warrant 131426. I'm asking approval of the amount of $31,083.45 from the listed funds.
I have a motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any questions on the warrant? The roll, please. Kenny?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. The warrant's been approved. The next warrant, sir?
Warrant number 141502, in the amount of $457,717.06 from the listed funds, as well as payroll for the two periods ended May 15th and May 29th, in the amount of $496,157.35, for a total to be approved of $953,874.41.
I have a motion to approve. Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Shower. Now, I noted that typo in that one item. Do we have to call this as amended, or how do we have to call this?
You don't need to amend it.
No, okay. Any questions for the treasurer? The roll, please. Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Do the chairman of reports, Alderman Marques?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At our meeting last week, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the April 28, 2014, meeting, and submitted those to the clerk's office. And our next meeting is June 23, 2014, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
June 23?
June 23.
Okay. Alderman Shower?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our June 2 admin finance meeting tonight was canceled due to lack of agenda items, and our next admin finance meeting will be held Monday, July 7, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you.
Alderman McGaughlin is not here this evening, but the police committee will meet next on June 16 at 6 o'clock in the police training room. And one of the items will be a two-year report by the chief in the police department.
Very good, thank you. Let's move to questions, comments, and agenda-related. And we don't have an audience, so I guess we can't open it up to them. But is there any items, any questions from the aldermen first? Any items on the agenda? Let's move to all business, and there being no all business, move to the consent agenda for the purpose, for the residents, the viewing residents. Let me read the items that are on the consent agenda. The first item is a motion to approve a warrants, approving a variation to the Darian Sign Code for Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe and Banquets. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution approving the plat of drainage easement for the installation of a storm sewer at 7302 and 7306 Capital Drive. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution approving the plat of drainage easement for the installation of a storm sewer at 7318 Capital Drive and 7317 Sunrise Avenue. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution to enter into an engineering agreement with Christopher Burke for professional services for the Kentwood Court Bridge repairs in the amount not to exceed $19,900. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution to enter into a contract agreement with Morton Salt for the purchase of rock salt in the amount not to exceed $241,821.32. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Darian and the Darian Park District for rock salt. The next item is a motion for a resolution for the intergovernmental agreement between City of Darian and Center Cass District 66 for rock salt. The next item is a motion to approve a resolution accepting a proposal from Auto Truck Group for the purchase of a surface body equipment package, lighting accessories, hydraulic controls for the 2014 International 7400 SFA 4x2 cabin chassis, which is unit 103, in the amount of $64,288. Do I have a motion to approve, Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? The roll, please. Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. All items have been approved. The next item is new business, and there being no new business, I'm moving to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature first from the city council members. Alderman Belkey?
I have a couple of things. Looks like anybody that's interested in the parade, right, for the Lions Club, our deadlines are June 30, as well as anybody else who's participating, correct? And also, I wanted to invite some residents for my ward, Ward 2, for a town hall meeting on Tuesday, July 22. A little ahead of the game, but what I wanted to do was announce it in the Neighbors Magazine for July, August. So, be on the lookout for that. What I wanted to do is just give an update on particularly the 75th Street and Cass area, both with the development, with the street widening, and, you know, all those things, I think is worthy of discussion. It will be at the Indian Prairie Library, and anybody's welcome here as well to come. That's all I have.
Would you rather use the city hall for your meeting, or you think it's better closer to your residence over the Prairie?
I had it at the library.
The first time, yes.
And it worked out really nice, so I didn't even think to have it here.
Okay, all right. Any other announcements? Anyone in the audience that has an announcement? I think we've covered everything. Then I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belkey?
I'm in shock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
I'm in shock. It was somebody other than the guy.
Yeah, exactly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.